Let me check, Mr. Apple Mouse here. Okay. Uh, call the order is our first agenda. Mr. Clerk, do we have a forum?
Well, I'll, I'll call the roll for attendance.
Oh, no.
I'll determine it. Supervisor Goldberg.
I'm here.
Trustee Moser.
Sure.
Trustee John T. Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Gail Schenzer Eisenberg.
Here.
Trustee Elliot Robbins.
Here.
Assessment Jan Churchill.
Here.
Administrator Diane Ty.
I heard her. You hear, Di?
I don't see her in the, uh, in the participant room here right now. She dropped out.
While Lister's attending, she should be back. And Communications Director McCall.
Here, sir.
Deputy Clerk Sandy Forrester.
Yeah.
Mister Supervisor, we do have a quorum for business.
I'm, I'm pleased to hear that. Uh, the next item on our agenda would be up sledge of allegiance to the flag. And I'm counting on Gail to bring the temporary permanent flag or something. There it is. And, uh, all those who are able, please stand. Everyone else will say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Um, the next item on the agenda would be public comment. If there are any, keeping in mind that should the need arise during the courses meeting, you will, you could be called on again later on in the agenda. Is there anyone now who has an item of public comment? Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to moving my glasses. Uh, approval of meetings from the meeting, the last meeting in February, is it, Jerome?
Not the March meeting, but the February meeting. And I want to the board. Sandy did an incredible draft and I listened to that recording over and over and over again. There is an initial mistake. It's a typo under Supervisor Goldberg's report and I will clearly fix that. That it was, I, I said Supervisor Goldberg thanked the board and then I did the faux instead of.
Yeah.
Please, I'll correct that, but there were so many numbers. That was an interesting meeting you had in February. I, I, of course, was recovering or trying to at the time.
Right. And you know what, Jerome? You're going to be recovering for a while and don't worry about it. You do the best you can. That's all you can do. And don't worry.
But I hope the board, I, I know, again, it's like, it's just not the way, you know.
It's, it's what it is.
So I do hope you've had a chance to at least look at it and be assured that we went over and over and over the stuff from.
Well, after this many years, you're entitled to some leeway here.
I move for acceptance of the new township for admitting minutes of February 23rd.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Well, Mr. Supervisor.
Oh, no, you've got it. I'm sorry. Call the roll.
Brian, Jack, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Stefan?
Hi, Diane.
You're in.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just about to do the roll call for the approval of the minutes. It's been moved and seconded. Supervisor Goldberg.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Moser.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
abstain, didn't read them, couldn't get them in time.
Yeah, I miss, uh, Trustee Eisenberg.
Yes.
And Trustee Robbins.
Yes.
Okay, Jerome, do, do we have a approving forum? Or whatever I'm supposed to ask for?
They're approved.
Oh, okay. Then, hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. You know, after, this is the last meeting. I hope I got it right, but whatever.
We have one more in, in May that will.
Just like I said, there's one more meeting. I hope I did it right. All right.
It's almost a month away, Mr. Supervisor. Just think, a month and a handful of days, so.
You know, we can't but a little rickety some celebrate, but we'll figure something out. Okay. Um, anyway, we're done with the minutes for now. Uh, they're approved and accepted. Uh, we move on to a supervisor's report. Uh, the first item I have on the supervisor's report is a deep thank you to Trustee Moser. Uh, as you are all aware, I am, uh, in the midst of dealing with, uh, being in and out of consciousness and awareness and other things brought on by cancer. And I am way out of it tonight, but Supervisor Moser stepped in and I'm deeply appreciative of Stefan's help and assistance, uh, as we go forward with tonight's meeting. Um, I don't know that there are any other items in the supervisor's report. Again, that I'm thankful for the assistance of the board as we do go forward. And, um, I know along with others, I'm deeply appreciative of the assistance everyone puts forward. There was an item of business that was referred to the board at the end of our last meeting. And that was, uh, uh, a question as to recusal of Supervisor Thomas uh, on an item of business with, uh, the youth organization of Quanetta. Uh, I, I as supervisor was requested to, uh, speak with Representative Thomas uh, and achieve, uh, some understanding of the item of recusal that was done. Supervisor Thomas did agree to rules of, uh, recusal along with, uh, my role as supervisor. And I'm deeply appreciative that, uh, again, that Supervisor Thomas did step in and, uh, agreed to recuse himself wherever appropriate. And he did it. And as far as I'm concerned, it's a moot issue at this point. Uh, I understand that Supervisor Thomas did offer to recuse himself going back uh, several years and nobody wanted it, so we didn't do it. So the heck with it. And.
Excuse me. I recused myself four years ago when I was on that committee. Uh, and the recusal was indeed accepted. I thought that just sort of lasted.
I thought that accepted everything. And as far as I'm concerned, as supervisor, it's over and done with. Uh, the other item on there that I found curious, and this would be a bookkeeping matter for uh, the chair of that committee. Trustee Thomas is not listed in the membership on our annual report as a member of the committee. So he can do whatever the heck he pleases because he's not listed on that darn thing altogether. Uh, but I leave that to the committee to work out its own bookkeeping matters. But Trustee Thomas' name does not appear, uh, on the register of, uh, membership for the AOC committee. So you guys work it out. That's, uh, but again, this would be a matter that was referred to me as supervisor and I see nothing to deal with. And if you guys want to work it out, y'all do that. Uh, that brings us to the clerk's report. Mr. Clerk, your turn.
So, uh, it's hard to fathom that 2020 could be matched up. It's a bad year, but it has been 2021. And I do want to say, uh, to all of you who sent nice messages and encouragement over the passing of my, my mom. She was a huge township supporter. She really liked you. Cause you know, this is my 12th year and she liked people before, but she really liked you because she knew that I was happy working with you. And just, uh, that's kind of the way it should be in local government, that people should be civil and interested in common goals. I just want to tell you, like, my mom was a real believer, like a Harriet Hahn type. She was a real believer in what you do, what we do. And so, um, I'm just really happy that she got to go to so many township meetings. So you guys may not be aware, but with the clerks, I was really a devoted active member of the Clerks Association. Just like Nicole, I'm super excited like to take you there because it's, it's just so helpful. And my mom became like a mascot for them just because. Even they spoke and we had remembrances at the funeral luncheon and it was just really, I don't know, I just feel so blessed too that I was able to do it after the.
And butterflies.
COVID things. I mean, it was because it was so tight and then they gave us a little window to like have some, it was very hard, but, um, at least, uh, we really stayed in a standoff. So that was, that was all. Oh, and then the second item, you know, she went to every annual town meeting with me and all the, and so it was really, uh, strange last week, but I'm very pleased to all of you. Alan looked so fantastic, didn't he? Like just, and every, like, just the way, the way it pulled off. And it was again, meaningful and special and the awards were nice and the, it just, it made me very happy and I appreciate that. And to you, Nicole, like that is such a joy and like next year to get to do it in person, real one and I'll, I'll do anything I can. Like I just want to show you that, like, you have so much, like, fun responsibility for, for the township. And like things will be, you'll have it squared away and I can, I can guide you on so many things and I promise I will. So far I have not, but I will, trust me. And you'll just start off with such a great relationship with Gail on the board. It's going to be really good. And that is just that, that, that my last ATM was really good and Jack, as I've always come for, he is so like, whatever you could do to keep him in, in helpfulness. He's just like a perpetual front of like helping. But Jack always reminds and pushes. So you, like even our annual town meeting mailing list, Jack has that down there like, it's just fabulous. And of course to Sandy too. So, but we have one more meeting and then on May 24th, we'll have our inauguration of our new board. You all.
Y'all ready?
What's missing?
Jerome does a heck of a job at that.
Thank you. I was really happy, Alan, with our last annual town meeting.
You, you should be. You did a good job. And what's going on?
I told some of the people, Alan's, but geez, Brian Leverens is like the magic touch. Alan's plaque is gorgeous. It's like, wow.
Wow. Now, now you got me.
Keep it away from Linus, Alan, because he might be all over that.
You, you've, uh, you've heard of, of Met Linus, yes. Uh, Linus has not met an inanimate object. He doesn't enjoy eating.
High shelf because this one he'll be really intrigued. So again, I want to thank the board for your cooperation last week. I was really glad that we pulled it off and you had so many like interesting, it just seemed to flow and, uh, okay, thank you.
You, you did a great job, Jerome. Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda would be the assert, uh, that's God. The assessors report. I really can't put two words together, maybe three. Uh, so Jan, it's your turn to get at least three words. And, uh, I'm going to go get a glass of water while you're doing that and shall be.
Okay.
And then I'll turn this over to Stefan. But meanwhile, it's your turn.
All right. Thank you. Um, then I'll have to return to ask Alan a question when he comes back.
Okay. I'll make stuff up.
Um, so because, because the question is, I ca, his office email doesn't seem to be working.
Oh, it is. I can tell you, it is not for the time being.
Okay. And it, all right.
I'm trying to make it work. As of now, it does not.
Good. Okay. Then, um, then, then going forward into what I had sent to the trustees already, um, which had not, has not been resolved yet as far as I know. Um, last Friday I sent an email to, uh, Alan and Gail, um, telling them that the office administrator has ignored my multiple requests to tell HTML Global to link 446-8200 to the temp number as was done for 446-8202. Len receives emails daily from people who've called 446-8200 because it's what they've been doing for years. And personal friends have asked me, what's up with the phone? Um, he did a rough count for me and I have my own. We have received between.
Your sound just went away, Jan.
Modern technology.
Yeah, isn't it wonderful? Jan, we lost you.
While we're in this hiatus, when are we coming back into the office? What's going on?
Well, while we're waiting for Jan, uh, Elliot's question is, uh, let me double Elliot's question because we've got an office that, uh, apparently can't function because people can't get to their computers. And talking with, uh, what's her name, Larisha, uh, she, she had to do some stuff at home that is well beyond the call of duty because she can't get access to her computer. And she suggests that it has something to do with, and golly, I hope she's wrong, something to do with, we can't get the electricity going and the computers going until we get resolution from the insurance company. Now, if that's the case, my golly, we might be out of business for weeks and weeks. But Diane would know that.
That is, yeah, that, that is not the case. In fact, um, later on in the agenda, we were going to address this, that, uh, as of today, the electrician is now, uh, working on a proposal that he is going to present to the, to the, has to work with the village because this is, has to go through the village because part of the issue.
Village, uh-huh.
Yeah. Although they've been, uh, from everything I understand and the feedback I've gotten, they are very, very cooperative.
They, they try. Yep.
Very much so. And they're very much aware of our situation. And it is my understanding that they're going to expedite the proposal that is put there and through their, their channels. And then it'll be presented to, uh, obviously the insurance company.
Diane, it's also my understanding that, um, the front of our sidewalk is now torn up because somebody else is having a problem. Is that correct?
Uh, what they're doing is on, uh, on Elm Street, they have the company working with the, I believe it's the gas lines is what's being addressed. What happens in front of our building is, and I don't know if everyone's totally familiar with this, that there is a, what they call manhole or a vault. And that vault is on the village sidewalk. That therefore it's about four feet out would be my, my guess from that vault to our building. That is where the work has to be done to go into that vault and into our building. So that is why the village is in, involved. And my understanding, the village has to, or the fire department has to approve it. And then as does the, um, the insurance company, once they get that proposal. So it is a partnership to that end. Um, I don't know the details at this point, the proposal, just as, uh, as I said, he was in the office today with one of his people and they're presenting it. So there are several parties involved, if you will. Uh, once that electrical work is, um, completed, uh, we don't have a timeframe at this point. Once that's completed, then the building will indeed have electricity. Subsequent to the building having electricity, there's, uh, there are steps of things that have to be done. We have had the water removed. There is damage to the drywall. Um, there's going to have to be, uh, follow up. There's a whole list of things. For instance, the elevator, once all of this electricity becomes active and in the building, we're going to have to reset the, um, the air conditioners, the furnaces, anything of that nature. The computers and the issue with the computers and the telephones has been, uh, in my opinion, very, very effective. Uh, there had been discussions about the phones. Uh, and we're in the process of having the IT, HTML support our phones. They went above and beyond and took the challenge and were able to determine, um, a program, if you will. It's a temporary setup and that temporary setup enables everyone to have the phone tree and then calls can come into them. So it is active. Jan is referring, um, and there's many, many other issues behind this, um, issue that she's brought up, but I think needs to be shared. I don't know, perhaps that this is the venue. Um, but, but leaving that there, we have the main line, which was the idea to make sure it was accessible for all staff and for any of the people working upstairs if they were doing that. So the direct line, um, that the 8200, that's the main town fund line. There are direct lines, for instance, excuse me, not 8200, 8201. There are not direct lines for any of us, myself included. And anyone, whether Larisha does have the 8202 number, she receives the calls. If there are a lot of calls, otherwise the people calling can reach out directly. So no one is missing the phones, uh, excuse, the phone receipts or messages. Getting back to the question, when is the building opening? The electrical, which is, this is the biggest thing. The electrical step is obviously the biggest jump. Once that's done, it does include rewiring because as a result of the fire, everything was damaged, including the pipe that runs from the location of what they're calling the scene out to the village. It's in a pipe and it, it contains all of these wires. It was such a hot art or whatever they call that, that everything's melted. They cannot pull wires out. They cannot do whatever. They have to indeed remove that, that pipe. So it is a little more complicated. Uh, that can't be fixed. There's no hitting a button and everything turns on. It just doesn't work like that in this particular case. We are however, very, very fortunate that we did not lose the whole building. One of the issues, the fire department chief has discussed with me, is we do have, uh, gas meters that are approximately at most two feet from where this main comes in. It's been there obviously forever. Those are going to have to be replay, re, relocated because of the danger. Had that arc or whatever they call it, the, the back draft, if you will, of this fire, uh, hit that, the whole building would have gone up. So that's, um, trying to look at it positively and not find criticism or find issues of what's going wrong. Looking at it right, we have our building and what we're doing is taking that step, moving forward in the succession of steps that are required. So there's a lot of coordination going on there. Um, the staff has been outstanding. They've been doing their different functions so that they're able to do everything that they can, say nothing of Northfield Township. That's been a saving grace for us. Um, the food, the things are getting done, the reports, the checks are getting done. Brian is now that returned from vacation and he is doing his, his thing and doing the, um, the different drives, the drive. In fact, I think it was Saturday. So everyone is functioning. It is indeed difficult because we're adapting and overcoming, if you will, the issues that we have to deal with and they're doing a great job. The services are being delivered. The, uh, people are being paid. Albeit, there is sometimes a delay. We're not even receiving mail. Uh, Larisha or Jean are going to the post office and bringing all of the mail in and putting it in the mailboxes. So things are functioning. So getting back to the question, when, as soon as I find out, and I have talked or advised, if you will, Gail and Alan on both of these, the status of this, where we are. And today was the day that they were able to get in there. So once that's done, we then will have the electricity and the, the next step will be to get all of the operations in there back up and running. First off, obviously the computers and the phones, um, but all of the different, um, issues that we have in a building that people take for granted, including the elevator. We don't know if the elevator is going to be working. The elevator was located right at the bottom of the stairs where there was water that came down those stairs and flooded and came, uh, along with everything was coming out of the building that into the, uh, what they call the, I guess, the trap or the hole underneath the, um, elevator. That obviously hasn't been checked because we have no electricity. Where the fire took place was in the electrical room. Where there is a, where there is a room, if you will, that is secure as the elevator, uh, mechanics, if you, I've talked with the elevator people numerous times. That wasn't to their knowledge destroyed, but we don't know this. The electricity is the first step. So that is in essence where we are. Um, for me to be able to address that, and as I had already discussed about the gas, which is another issue. Um, there is no gas. There's nothing in that building because everything was shut off by the village along with the fire department. They couldn't even get in there at the time of the fire due to the problem of having that live wires in there that are now melted and no longer, um, able to be replaced.
Diane, uh, very good detailed information. I have a little bit of follow-up. Has our insurance company, the township's liability insurance company been responsive and cooperative?
Very much so. Very much so. And they keep it.
Do we have?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Is there an adjuster assigned to our file or go-to person?
Yeah, there's adjusters, there's fire, um, uh, people who are, uh, associated with that on their team. There are electrical, um, contractor that came in. They've all been in and done all of their assessments. They are working on the scene and they are working on their removal, if you will, of the items in the scene that have been, um, damaged, that have been vet, rendered, um, unusable or whatever that is. And there are a lot of pieces in there that that took place. It even took out the, um, the Comcast line. We aren't sure what that, um, status is. There's some fringe in that, but they have been working in there and, um, doing the things they have to do to, to make sure they have the pieces, if you will, of that, of that, uh, scene. Now they're calling it a scene because in essence, it was what the things were damaged. We have electrical boxes. We have all kinds of things in there.
Before we get too much further into the report and I totally wig out, uh, I want to, I've had the unfortunate experience of going through building fires and things based on electricity over a period of time. The last one was several years ago on LaSalle Street where the, uh, an elevator for the 21st through the rest of the building floor, uh, went, it went one through 21. Then there was another tier of elevators. And unfortunately our elevators went one through 21 and then continued. And it was, uh, you want to talk about a disaster, but that's kind of what we went through in that experience. And what we're going through with Torma, our adjuster on this case, is much, much better. That, and I don't understand any of the technical reasons that it is much better. It just is. And I'm pleased that it is. If it stops being, uh, good, and if we do run into a problem, we do have access to another adjuster that we could run to i- if it's necessary. Uh, in the meantime, we're in good hands so far with Torma, which is an owned operation of Toy. And one that I had over the years, uh, some question as to how much we were paying Toy for this. I'm less, uh, bothered than I was because these guys seem to be doing a really good job. And I only hope they continue to do a really good job, uh, because we're the beneficiaries of that. Having said that now, at this point, I wish you guys a terrific meeting. I'm going to go lie down somewhere. I'm sorry. Uh, Jerome, if you need me for any reason, I'm here. Jerome, if you need me for any reason, I'm here. And you guys have a great meeting. I, as I said, I'll be here either on the phone or actually physically, my body will be here and have a great meeting.
Diane, I have another follow up question. Any clarification or more certainty on the cause of the fire?
It was electrical, that's all. And I shall shut up because I don't know any more than that.
It, it indeed was electrical. There is also water damage to our vault. And that was resulting, at least that at this point in time is the resulting from water that came off of the, the street and over into our building. Worked or onto our vault, if you will, onto the, the big plate that sits there and seeped into there. That is what is actually being looked at, trying to be assessed, which from what I understand is causing the amount of time earlier, I just mentioned Elliot, that they are taking different pieces away from the scene and and evaluating that kind of thing.
But, but this water, was this after the fact? Was this part of the putting out of the fire effort? Or was this a separate initiating?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what John said to him. He tried. John, what'd you say?
I had heard early on that a water main broke somewhere and that's why we got a fire.
That, that water main, that that is a piece that is being looked at. The subsequent water that came off that our, our system had a sprinkler as a result of the fire. It, what came first, the, the, the sprinkler was activated due to the extreme heat that was called, called. And so the water that came in on the street where this main broke is, is, is what they're saying, looking at what had caused that damage because that water seeped into that.
A little bit of experience I have in dealing with insurance companies over the years is that sometimes when a liability insurance company is able to determine with certainty that somebody else is the cause of your problem, then sometimes it's their inclination to try to push it off onto another company and we got to wait for the other company. I just want to make sure, I mean, we're paying our premium to Torma.
Correct.
And, you know, I want to make sure that we get all the business interruption benefits that we are entitled to for the dollars, the precious money that we spend with Torma each year. And if Torma has to fight it out with other people behind the scenes, that's their problem. I just don't want to get into a situation and I want you guys to be, to have your antennas up for this situation where Torma says, you know, it's the village or it's Comet or somebody. Let them handle it. We don't want to, we don't want to be pushed around like that. We want to get things fixed. As we want them, of course, to dot.
That, I, I, I understand completely what you're, what you're saying, Elliot. And I can, from the experience I'm having, they are not doing that. They're not waiting long. What they're trying to do is do diligence to look at everything and then move forward. Obviously, if there's something subsequent to that, that they'll have to deal with that directly. That's not our job to deal with that. Their job is to give us and make sure that those repairs are done. The dollars or whatever that is, the proposals are coming in. Like I said, we had, we had work done, there's going to be work done in the drywall. There's going to be work done in the ceilings, in the location of the scene. All that's going to be done. They're pushing to get this out and moving and they'll deal with that. That's their job. That's in essence their job. That's not our job. That's what we're paying for them.
Diane, thank you. Um, Elliot, I think we'll move on. There's another provision in the agenda to go through this if we want to, but Jan was in the middle of a report. And Jan, I think you're back with us?
Yes, I am. At least I hope I'm back. We'll see. Anyway, so I apologize. I don't know. I mean, I, this is AT&amp;T, but I don't know. I don't know where Diane was about answering the phone issue, but it doesn't change the fact that I have a dedicated phone line to the township that if people call at the moment, what they get is, you know, AT&amp;Ts, beep 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 beep, all circuits are busy. This is not an acceptable state of affairs for a dedicated phone line. Excuse me, Len and I brought our, so returning to my report, if I get, if I get through it, yay. Len and I brought our computers home and we've been working with the tech team at HTML Global because our home internet connections aren't as strong as the office servers. We didn't become minimally functional until after April seventh. Our in-house assessment, our assessment software, which is called AIM, poses special problems. I don't know why or what they are. They, they just exist. The software manager, whose name is Pete, is working with HTML Global and he suggested that we consider renting space because the patches they've created aren't robust enough for a lengthy out of office stay. Especially as we are heading into an appeal period, which if the assessor ever gets his act together, we may sometime find out when that is. So far, we don't yet know. I also asked Diane if she would give me contact information for the insurance adjuster who's in charge of the township claims. So I could get information that I need in terms of, you know, looking, looking at rental options and so forth. It's definitely Plan B. I certainly hope it won't happen, but it sounds like from what I was able to get from Diane's report of what I was able to hear, it is probably going to be a possibility now rather than a maybe not. The difficulties are that, in my opinion anyway, that Diane not only did what I asked in either case, but she didn't even respond to me about them, which I'm sorry, I find totally unacceptable. I therefore, Alan, I am asking you as supervisor, please, and, and as a contract signatory here, to direct the administrator to give the assessor copies of current contact contracts and contact information for service providers on request. Amend all current contracts to include the township assessor in quotes as a person who may contact service providers. Include that authorization in all future contracts. Ensure that the township assessor receives copies of duly executed contracts in future. And in general, confirm that as an elected official responsible for a function of township government, the township assessor not only may have the need, but has the right to contact service providers as appropriate. In other words, the township assessor, not the office administrator, decides what administrative information and support are needed for assessment issues. I have, today I have received, I did get the contact information for the Torma insurance adjuster. I have not heard back from her yet, but that's fine. I was only able to reach her today and I had to, you know, I had to leave. She was not available by phone. I sent her an email. So the fact that I haven't heard from her doesn't bother me. So that, that step is done, but I, I really do, I need to, I need to have the phone hooked up. It is totally inappropriate to have people calling a number that, that goes boobity boop at them. This can't be done. I don't understand why it wasn't done originally. And I certainly don't understand why I have heard nothing about it in three weeks. End of report.
Diane, do you have comments as to that or should we open it up to the floor?
No, I'm asking the trustees to take over on this one. That that's my request, if you please. I would like the trustees to direct this to be done. I, there, there's, there's just no reason not to do it.
Jan, let me understand something. Is the specifically the assessor's phone line not working?
Yes. If you call four four six eighty two hundred, you will get AT, AT&amp;Ts, you know, mechanical noise and then an auto voicemail that says all circuits are busy. Please try your call again later.
Okay. So that's a specific issue.
Yes. Specific for the phone that I, I, I want the phone put to, to receive this, to have the same information on it that is there when you call eighty two oh two and that it therefore links over to the temporary number.
Okay. My other question, Jan, is with regard to asking for the contractual documentation and the contacts, have you traditionally had that ability? Or is this a new policy, if you will, that you're trying to implement?
It is a new policy I am trying to implement because requests for information have not been responded to. And I think it is something that as a unofficial responsible for a complete set of township government, it is something the township assessor in general, not just me, but that the township assessor should be able to get that information as needed without any trouble. Our issues, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying the administrator should have to take over and make the phone calls. That's exactly the point. If I need to reach somebody, I should be able to do it as fast as possible without an extra layer and just get moving.
Jan, what, what is it that you specifically are looking for that you need that you aren't presently getting, I guess is my question.
Aside from the telephone number, the reason that I wanted. Right. I wanted to be able to talk to the insurance adjuster because I wanted to find out about what our policy covered in terms of rental claims and so forth. Would there be money for rent if we needed to rent space? There had this report that Diane made tonight, which I only got parts of again. But there had been nothing sent to anybody about what kind of temporary arrangements anyone might be making while we were going on. It was just everybody's doing whatever they're doing and, you know, hoping, hoping for the best. But with no information coming from, coming to all of the trustees and township officials about, about what was going on. We are, we don't have the luxury, once the township, once the assess, county assessor publishes his schedule of necessarily waiting to find out what's going to happen next. I, I am not willing to do that. I want to have a, I want to have, you know, as, as many ducks in a row as I need to have in a row. So that we're able to go forward and I was not, I was not receiving the information. Now that part I've got covered because I now have that information. I can go forward. But I don't think I should have to pull teeth or fight with anybody to get that information. I think I should just be given it. If I, if I say, may I have this information? The answer should be here it is.
It sounds as though things are being coordinated. And my concern, personal concern is if there are too many ducks in a row, then the assessors and the other individuals involved are going to start questioning who has the ultimate authority. And we could get caught in that quagmire, partly to Elliot's point, where he's saying, who's doing what? So I'm a little concerned with the request to the extent that if the information is being coordinated, perhaps it should be more transparent, to use a current colloquy. But I think that perhaps we can work this out internally. I'm not inclined to just say it's okay for the assessor's office to have access to information separate and apart from perhaps Diane as administrator. I don't know what others feel about that. That's my initial reaction.
Want information separate from what Diane has as administrator. But on the, not assumption, but on the understanding that what the administrator has goes to the supervisor as the chief official of Nutria Township. The assessor is also an official of Nutria Township and should receive the same information, in my opinion, at the same time. Or, you know, within a reasonable time thereafter. Same phone call, same email. It's not that difficult. I think that it is probably true that there are more people in the township who, who use the assessor's function than any other single function of the township. And to make, well, and so therefore to make, to make the assessor sort of stand in line to get information is, in my opinion, an inappropriate position. It should be automatic. I'm fine if it's automatic, but it hasn't been automatic. And everything I'm saying is directed to the fact that since it isn't automatic, I really don't want to have to play games to get it. I would just like to be able to have it. That's all.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment?
I, I don't want to get involved in an internal because that's really the supervisor's job. But I would say Jan makes a simple point. She is an elected officer of this township. The job that she's doing is different than many other assessors because of Cook County. But I think she should be, as an elected official, in an information flow easily when it pertains to anything that she and Lynn Schiffler are doing. So I happen to feel that the point she makes in general is absolutely correct.
Thank you, John.
John, I did, I agree with you. My point was that if Dan's calling the assessor, the appraiser and Diane's calling the appraiser and Alan's calling the appraiser, that's too many people involved in the game. But I totally agree with your premise. Diane, I'd like to hear from you, but before we do that, I'm curious as to, also, I guess I was going to make a point. The township has had a very rough several months here. And the supervisor in particular has been limited in his abilities. And I think that we have to give deference to the fact that at this point, people really are trying to do the best job that they can. Jan, I don't want anything to interfere with your job performance or what you do. It's a very valuable a part of the township. But perhaps the airing of these issues this evening will help facilitate the flow. That's my hope and my wish. And again, I would take deference with the fact that we've had a really rough several months here, forgetting the pandemic. I'm talking about personal health, fires, et cetera. So I'm glad we're having the conversation. I'd be more than welcome to entertain anybody else's thoughts on the matter and hope that we can get this flow going for the benefit of Jan and the assessor's office. Elliot, you got a big smile on your face.
Yes, Stephen, I think that was the understatement of the evening. We have had the ten plagues visited upon the township with everybody's health, with the fire, with the pandemic. It's, it's the perfect storm. And what we need to do, folks, is we need to hold things together because this is a great unit with great people. And I know we can overcome this and hold things together and we could live to fight a, you know, we could, we could make it to the other side. What my question is for Diane is that Diane, you're trying to hold a lot of, you're trying to juggle a lot of balls and you're doing a great job. But I can't help but thinking that your job could be made easier if you simply give Jan the authority to do whatever she needs to do, to talk to whoever she needs to talk to, to get her lines of communication open so she can do her job. Give her the authority to do it. And, you know, it's not unusual for, for an adjuster. Stephen, you used the term appraiser, but we've got an insurance adjustment issue here. That's what we're dealing with. It's not unusual for an adjuster to be contacted by a number of different people in a, in a lost situation like this because each one of those people has their own needs. And we have a major business interruption underway here. Jan's business, Len's business have been interrupted. Let them take some of the burden off of you, Diane, by letting them deal directly with the adjuster and get whatever patchwork they need to have done. And if something isn't going to be covered initially, I'm not even worried about it. Spend what needs to be spent. We'll fight that battle down the road, but I think what Jan's trying to do is to make your job easier, Diane. At least that's what I'm hearing.
Thank you. That's, that is indeed part of it, Elliot. It's quite true. There, Diane should not be expected to be the, you know, the only finger in the dyke. She hasn't got enough of them, quite frankly, with the ten plagues of Egypt. They're all gone. So let me do what I can because it is my office and I know the timing and the functions well enough. And there's just no need for any back and forth on it. The other, the other part of that is though, that it isn't really Diane's decision. It is the supervisor's decision and/or the trustee's decision. Because I am an elected official and that is not going to end. So I, I would appreciate the cooperation to do what I need to do, but I intend to do what I have to do anyway.
Diane, do you have any comments at this point?
Yes, yes, I actually have many comments, some of which I'd like to share. I don't think that this is the venue. It, it does regard the manner in which Jan has gone upon about this. I understand what is she saying. She did not advise to my knowledge that she was looking for something with the adjuster regarding a place to relocate or whatever the case is. Someone had made the comment about. Basically so many people working with this and that gets to the how many people are in the kitchen working. The experience that I've had that I'm not going to put detail and I certainly will show, share that a different, a, a different time off of this venue. Are the hat, is the feedback I've gotten from different people that she has approached in the past. The manner in which it is and then also the representation of um what she does and what she does in the township and who is responsible to her or whatever. The statement that the eighty-two hundred is a dedicated line is not, is not true. It is a letter, is a. A, a number that each one of us have. All of us have direct lines. Reaching the number and calling eight two hundred. Jan is, everyone's aware, those lines were uh. Rendered in, you know, inactive the moment that we had that fire and everything was cut down. We did supply the eighty-two zero two, which is and has been in the past, the township's main number. In that is a phone tree that is, people are able to reach your operation. Uh, subsequent to that, and uh, one of the issues that was mentioned is that she wasn't receiving updates. You did receive updates. Any updates that I did put out, you were included that along with Leonard Schaflet. The issue regarding. Having the updates and being able to uh get into the system, we had set up a test. Number so that we were able to test to make sure that everyone could get in that with the number one, number two, whatever the case was for your line, Larisha's line, all of ours. I had asked you in one of the updates, uh, if you wouldn't mind not posting that on the internet and I believe, Jack, you subsequently helped with that and I understand. Because I was asked by HTML, that was their test line. Um, the. That was the same line and, and you, then you went ahead and put that on, which is fine, but it's the identical parallel number. So this is a small example of the different things of, I've received uh quite rude emails and voicemails from her. Um, I'm happy to do uh and work and be able to provide the information, um, if in a civil way it's presented. I certainly am trying to do what I have to do to get this coordinated. It's a big job to do this. Regarding, you know, respect as an official, I understand that, but. People don't, you know, aren't given respect. They earn respect. And to that point. I can give the information, um. But what we don't need, and I've been asked even by the current group, is don't have too many people involved in this. It is too, it is just makes. Too many issues and too many problems. Um, I think where we are right now, the eighty-two oh two number. In my opinion, and the test number that is now up is, I think, sufficient. If that's the case and it's not sufficient.
Not working.
What, what's that? I'm sorry. I didn't hear what he said.
He said it's not.
It wasn't working. Are you talking about gate two hundred?
No, eighty-two, no, eighty-two zero two. If anybody calls four four six eighty-two zero two. You will receive. A, at evening time after hours, they call that a, a message to leave a, um, a message uh from the eighty-two oh two number. And then a message is picked up by Larisha the next day if anyone leaves that. Up between nine and five. We have a phone tree, so I would suggest someone tries that and you would hear. The phone trees, the voice that says Nutria Township and it, and it then gives. For instance, Gene Ross or eighty-two oh one, Brian Leverens eighty-two oh three, Jan, yours is included in that one as well. So there is, the people are reaching that. Um, Jan, you're referring back to the eighty-two hundred. That is your, what you're calling your dedicated line. Each and every one of us in that township building has a dedicated line. That receive lines, that receive messages directly and that's going to return. Once this system gets back up and running. So that will be. Appropriate, but Stephen, they, I could go on with other things. I understand. I will be more than welcome to work with things, but I will not have. So many different things going on that people will call me and say, well, who is this or what happened kind of a thing? And I, I'm trying to do the job, the very best job I can with this because there is a lot involved.
Yes, there is, but if, when people have for years. Picked up a phone and called eight four seven four four six eighty-two hundred. And reached now an automated message that says you have reached the o, office of Township Assessor Jan Churchwell. That, in my opinion, is a dedicated phone number. It is not my personal extension. That is eighty-two one five. I don't know what lens is. Yes, I know we all have personal extensions, which hardly anybody in the world knows about, which is just. I wasn't finished. I may be incorrect in calling it a dedicated number. It is, however, a number that the public is aware of and that residents use. And I repeat, it is inappropriate to have them call that number and receive. AT&T gobbledegook. I've simply would like that number attached. To the existing temporary system and I do not understand what the difficulty is about doing that. Period. Everything you said is an excuse for not doing it. I don't understand.
Um, I'm not offering um excuses. I'm offering the facts of what we have currently functioning.
And I'm saying.
Excuse me, I'm not, excuse me, I'm not finished. And the eighty-two oh two number, anyone can look on our website and look at that.
They pick the number they have called for years.
Diane, any sense of when the eighty-two hundred may be restored?
It will, once we have the electrical system up, the phone system will be um active.
Right. Um, I, I think we've got to move on with the meeting, but.
I agree.
I would like to consider having one of the trustees. Or perhaps Gail as the incoming supervisor. To take some kind of a intermediary role here and try and facilitate both parties' interests so we can move forward with this. I understand the limitations, but I think that at this point, we need to deal with this internally. So I would ask if anybody is interested in doing that or if that seems to be an appropriate solution. Cause I do think we need to move on.
I'd be happy to help in that capacity.
Bingo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. So um, we do have a new board meeting next month. Let's see if during this month we can. Better facilitate what Jan's needs are versus what Diane is trying to accomplish. And have perhaps a report at the next board meeting so we can further clear the air. That being said, I think we should move on. And at this point, we need a motion to adjourn to a public hearing for purposes of discussing the budget.
So move.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, um. Jerome, are you still with us?
I am, so I assume we should continue doing roll calls, you know, until this.
There's no money involved.
Well, it's, it's roll call because of Zoom meeting is my understanding.
Alright, alright. Go, 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 go.
So are you now supervisor for the, for the day? Do I call you supervisor or trustee? Trustee Moser?
Trustee Moser is fine.
Trustee Robbins.
Well, I fell here.
Trustee Robbins?
Yes.
And trustee Thomas?
Yes.
No.
No, okay. And I'll indicate that. And so it's three to one to go to close session or to go to the budget here.
Um, I would open it up for discussion.
Um, if I may. Yes. So I, I had emailed um prior to the meeting. I do not believe that, or I have no information to believe that this was properly noticed as a public meeting. So I am, I'm against moving to the public meeting. There are specific rules related to the budget. Um, and we still have time to do it properly, so I would do it. So that's my, those are my two cents.
Gail, was this um meeting that we're in now never um given public notice? Is that what you're saying?
The regular board meeting would have gotten its normal required forty-eight hours. Um, but in order for us to have the budget meeting, it needs to be posted in a number of different ways. Um, so let me grab that. Budget notice.
Gail, it was posted on the eighth, it was posted in the um. As we always have it posted for a public hearing.
It was posted on the eighth, you're saying?
Uh huh, yes.
I didn't get a response when I was looking for it. Um. And it was posted um in a, in a township newspaper?
It was, it posted with the, uh, we went through the, the media, the um. Pioneer, the Pioneer Media, which is where we always have it posted every year. As the hearing and then we have advised that the copy is available. When the, when the building is open, it's available for review. If not, it's available for um. A copy to be provided. We didn't receive any requests.
And was the budget itself posted?
No, the, the public notice is posted. What we, what is done is. Correct.
Well, doesn't the budget need to be inspected? You're supposed to make it um available. The tentative budget must be available for public inspection for thirty days before the hearing.
The, well, I, what we have is we have the document available if they want, if they request it. Because if it is available, i, if they have to come in the office or they pick up a copy. And I think when you had sent me a request on that, I had advised that I had touched a base with Toy on this and that they said that we've provided that. Um, information and that the important thing is that we have been and we had that discussion with our last meeting on the budget that are people available. To join the virtual, because we're doing virtual meetings, that people are available to attend and to hear and to, uh, in. Listen to the information about the, about the budget. And then the subsequent, th, this is the subsequent product that we had gone through that. Through the different details on that at our last board meeting in March. I don't recall the date exactly. And that that document was there and then we, this is the document that has been prepared is the actual document that it needs to be uh submitted by the clerk to the uh, to the county.
I understand that, um, but it's also still not on the website. So even if, you know, if it was available for inspection, you know, I feel like it, it. Violates at least the spirit of the budget notice and budget inspection. To have it only published in um the Pioneer Press rather than, you know, what says here, five, the five most public places in the township. And if, if our, if our normal method of notice is to put things on the website and it's not on the website. I mean, that's where I went to look for it. Um, and it wasn't there.
Gail, um, I have a question for Gail and Diane. Diane, if we put this off till the next board meeting, does that create any problems for you?
No, no, this document is ready. Um, this is available. It's, that's fine. That's we, we have until the end of May. I think we uh talked about that.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. Alright, so I'm going to recommend that we uh, well, actually withdraw the motion and. Put this on the agenda for the May board meeting with proper notice to be given.
Well, we can send the other notice to make sure that that's for that date. What is the date of the next board meeting? I know.
We hadn't gotten there yet. We can discuss that now if we want to.
Sure. Sure.
I think we need to um. Spell out in your motion what we see as proper notice. Cause I've just been reading that wonderful little book called Laws and Duties Handbook and it goes on and on and on and on. So proper notice would be, I think Gail mentioned it, uh, both posting on our website and um. Making a, some sort of piece of paper and posting it in the Glencoe, uh, Willmett. Uh, township offices, Weneket Township offices or something.
John, do you want to make that in the nature of a motion? The only motion standing on the floor right now was to adjourn to a public hearing. So we didn't.
I move that we um delay discussion of the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget until next meeting. And in the meantime, uh, make. Public notice of it both on our website uh and uh in the newspapers as possible. So that the public has an opportunity. To either look at the budget or to come to the meeting.
Sure. Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
So a second, Jerome?
Trustee Moser.
Yes.
Trustee Robbins.
Yes.
Trustee Eisenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Uh, the motion having been made, seconded and voted affirmatively, we will put the uh public hearing for the budget. Over till the next town meeting, which we will determine at the end of this meeting. Okay, that being said, um, I think we move right into the twenty twenty-one final closing financial report.
Okay.
Diane, you're on again.
I, I, here I am again. Okay, uh, the document uh is for everyone's information. We had uh reviewed this. Back when there was a, what I called a semi-closing. Because we had not yet wrapped up all of the different uh expenses and different checks that had to go out. For instance, the uh community support grants. This document therefore does represent the final closing for the township. Just as a recap, to not go through a lot of detail, but certainly have questions, uh, if you have questions. The two-page document, which is our financial report. Is a recap of where um each of the funds ended at the end of the fiscal year on two twenty-eight. Uh, noting that the town fund was down a hundred and fifty-two thousand four ninety-eight. If you recall. The last meeting, we were talking about that and I believe my estimate had been probably a hundred and fifty um. Five or fifty-eight thousand. So we came in right where we had um targeted. Uh, the general assistance uh experience uh in excess of funds, they call that, fifty-three thousand four sixty-four. Overall activity for the township was ninety-nine thousand oh thirty-four um. Down. The two pages identifies all of the uh end of the fiscal year activities. Giving the uh final dollar amounts, if you will, uh, for the town fund of eight hundred and forty thousand five oh nine. And the general assistance of one million oh twenty-three one thirty-six. Um, I could take any questions or just move on to the next page, just briefly, if, okay.
I would continue on Diane till you get interrupted.
Okay, uh, we have four pages and that is the uh itemized amount or itemized document, excuse me. With the uh different line items and this uh overview shows that on our estimated revenues, we came in at the ninety-six percent. Our received taxes were at ninety-seven percent. Which is really, is really um a, a good, a good amount. Uh, we had had in the past issues, I think we talked about that at the last meeting regarding the shift in when these dollars are received or not. But this came in uh overall, just looking down, which is what I really look for. When we've, we've made our line adjustments, which we did at the February meeting. To make sure and accommodate that we have all line items in um. In order, if you will, and in line with what our expenses will come because otherwise. We have to, we would have had to uh make an adjustment if we over, over uh used that line item. None of these came up uh over their line items. Uh, all the way through for the township, or pardon me, through the building, uh town hall expenses and through all of the different items. Bottom line, the town fund expenses for uh the twelve-month period was two billion seven seven eight six eighty-nine. Which represents eighty-six percent of that which we had budgeted. Same information on the fourth page. Is for the general assistance. The uh revenues came in, interestingly so, for the property tax at a hundred and three of what we had levied, but this is not an unusual occurrence. This is a routine um item, knowing that when we do the levy dollars, we usually. Uh, do not levy at any percentage and yet we still receive those dollars. Total general assistance revenues was a hundred and two percent. Again, note, none of the items were out of line. Showing that we had made those different changes of highlighting, of course, the food pantry. Uh, that came in at ninety-six percent and that was after an adjustment to the original budget. Overall, for the town fund, excuse me, for the uh general assistance was one hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and three. Overall, for the town fund, excuse me, for the general assistance was 118,203 dollars, which was 75% of that which we had budgeted. Overall activity for the township and the general assistance was 97% of the financials received and 84% of the expenses used for that budget. And that is all I have to say for that.
Any questions from? I, I had a, Diane, I just want to clarify. So we had budgeted for, on the town fund, I am, we budgeted for 505,790 deficit. We actually came to the deficit of 162,498. So we still, we still have excessive funds there, but I know every year we try to plan for a deeper deficit, but it usually comes up right about the figure we hit this year, if I'm correct.
It, it does. On previous, we, we usually come within a lower range. On previous times, we may have exceeded that. Or we've, one ish, or one instance not too long ago, I think we didn't really broke even, if you will, or we had, were at zero. But overall, that's correct. The, the amount of which we, the net variance is the best way to address that. That net variance, when we budget, is usually in the $500,000 to $600,000 range. Resulting, of course, of the increase in agency dollars that are expended and, and, you know, when we looked at the community support grants, et cetera. But it, yes, it is usually in that line, in that area.
And the same holds true for the general assistance account as well. We budgeted for 579,516, ended up with 99,034.
Correct, correct. And next year, just to note, next year, what had been discussed at the last board meeting and that was built into the budget is that we had changed and increased the administrative expenses to utilize some of those general assistance dollars, which is a very difficult thing to do because of the restrictions on what we can do with that general assistance.
Understood. Do you need a motion to approve the financial report or do we just accept it?
Yeah, I think, Jerome, let's.
We've done it so many, would you like one separate? Because we've done it and then we. Whatever you prefer.
Does anybody want to entertain a motion?
I move we approve the financial report as presented.
Second? I'll second it. Discussion? Okay, Jerome?
Trustee Mosher?
Yes.
Trustee Robbins?
Yes.
Trustee Eisenberg?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
The motion having been approved, we have approved the financial report as presented this evening. We're back to the building operation update. We did a fair amount of that already. I don't know if anybody feels the need to further elaborate on that. Looks like Jerome has some comments.
I have a quickie. Diane, we, we were going to have our last clerks meeting. Instead of doing, it, it's not going to happen then, right? May 6th?
Your last clerk, I'm sorry, what you're.
I was going to hold the last clerks meeting instead of a restaurant. We were going to do it at the, I'd see it all the laughter. Okay, that's not happening on May 6th, right?
No, I wouldn't.
I'm not, I'm not in a position to.
Unless we have an indoor barbecue, maybe, maybe.
Outdoor barbecue, Jerome.
Outdoor would be more appropriate.
The building is, okay, and then the second question, Diane, for our inauguration, we've, you know, we traditionally held it at the town hall. This will be on Monday, the 24th. Should I hope for another venue? Maybe the Winnetka Village Hall or somewhere else that would be a nice place to hold it? Or do you think by the 24th, things will be?
That's a loaded question. Um, I know, but I, to, I think to look for another venue, maybe just.
Yeah.
Would be, I agree, would be the best case. And if it doesn't turn out that way, then we can go from there.
Yeah, Diane, I wasn't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just.
No, that's okay.
Since we have the board all with us, I mean, Alan will, he's agreeable on everything. Would the board like me to look into, say, the Winnetka Village Hall or the Willmett Village Hall or?
Sure. Sure. Any, any form that you come up with is fine with us.
But I would just, I, I hope that not have conflicts on Monday evenings. I used to teach night school on Mondays, if you remember, but I, I don't anymore. So if, but it would be a really special thing. And at that time, I get to kick it off and inaugurate clerk-elect Capretta, and then it's kind of exciting. I mean, you'll get to do it all. We'll have nice certificate as well. If we can get back to the computer, wow, how will I ever get that again? Oh, well, do something nice.
Do the best you can, Jerome, as always.
You guys are all okay with that and I'll just run a by.
Thank you.
Whatever. Okay.
Anything else on building operations update?
I do have one more question. It's my understanding that some of the staff don't have the ability to work remotely. Would you mind giving us an update on that? And, you know, what kinds of equipment the, the staff might need in order to do their jobs?
They don't have the remote access at this point in time. They would have to have that set up. The access they have, they're able to get, well, to be honest, they're getting, they're using forms that they had had, for instance, in the GA and that they're, they're, we're making adaptations for presenting the forms and then processing the forms. The issue with having off-site access for, for everyone is really an issue of what they call, they don't want something compromised to, in having, having their, the database, because in essence, our, our total database is on a server at this point in time that is being handled by the HTML and they're doing a good job of that. And when people are on other off-site locations, like a laptop or their home computer, now in the case that Jan and Leonard had decided to remove the, the, the computers from their office, then they're using that computer. So what we're looking at is really the not compromising the total overall database. I think if, to answer your question, Gail, that are they adapting, they're doing, they're doing well with that, having access. HTML can provide them a copy of, if they need something to transfer a whole database. There had been an issue. Larisha had wanted a database to try to do with deposits. The issue that I had stressed to her is the important thing is to do our deposits and those bases can be set up. Gina's doing the same thing. She's trying to maintain what people she's providing services for and then she's going to update or have that updated into her system. So they are doing that. Brian, I can't really assess what forms or anything that he's using. I do know that he recently was able to, in fact, he had reached out and tried to set up to use the rack space because that is accessible off of a home computer.
Right. He has told me that he can, he can and does use rack space. What about like a remote PC type program where it's not, where you're going into the network? You know, not, you're not using your home network. You're using the, the employer's network.
Of what you'd have to do then is take, actually remove from the building, the computer that, that, that is assigned, if you will, to that specific office or that function. And that would then be the safe, the safeness, because that, that is the, that is actually the computer that is controlled, if you will, or handled or supported by the IT, because they've got a lot of protocols and a lot of issues and their concern, I think, is the compromise. So we're discussing removal of the computers.
Well, well, first of all, I'm, I'm not opposed to that in, in the sense that, you know, if they need their, to be able to do their job, they have to do their job. They obviously, you know, understand that, you know, you know, misuse of government property is, is.
Of course.
It sounds, and I don't, I have no reason to think that there'd be any problem. But the concept would be that you can, you can go into your, your computer space and access all your files, access all your, your applications without being in the office and without having to take the physical item. You know, I mean, you know, right after COVID, you know, law firm after law firm made that happen. You know, the government made it happen. So I'm wondering, you know.
I could certainly check that out.
But it might be because our network is completely down. Maybe we can't do it, but, but I would wonder if that had been checked.
Yeah, no, I can certainly, you know, ask, work with them on that or ask them that. The, yes, everything is completely down. Every, there is nothing in the building. The actual computers are sitting there. The company, the HTML is available if they want someone to pull a copy of something and give it to them. Again, it circles, excuse me, circles back to the computer or the laptop or whatever mode that they're using. Would they be able to update that there and then send that back? And that, I think that is the issue. I could certainly pose that and see if that's a possibility. My thought, right off the top of my head, from what you're asking, is we are in the third week of this. We're moving now forward. And once this is hopefully, you know, up and running, I think that would be, that would be the solution. I can ask that. I, I think we have to find out. I know Larisha was looking for one, like I said, one of her documents just to post people who have made donations through, in essence, we have that and those are checks. We also have the issue at Northfield. All of the donations that have been made to them directly, we're going to have to be able to recapture that or somehow address that. So it's a matter of accessing that files or getting that to, that I could certainly check into that.
Okay.
I have a question, Diane. Are our servers still in the office or did HTML come get them and take our servers over to their office?
Our server is no longer in the office. It's not servers plus or plural. It's one server and that's to have that access and be able to.
So if each person had their computer at home, as Len and I have, then they would have as secure access via the server as they have if they are in the office with their computer, basically.
Right. What you and Len have is the actual computer, correct?
Right, yeah, exactly. The, the machine itself, not, not access via our home systems. Yeah, exactly.
Exactly.
So if everybody, if everybody took their computer home, well, you have yours at home. So.
But that's for a totally different reason.
And so we are, we are all using the server, the same server we would be using if we were sitting in our offices.
Of course, exactly, because those computers are.
I just, I realized I was not exactly clear from conversations with HTML, because, you know, they're talking about how the, this connection isn't as strong as it could be and blah, 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 blah. And I thought, well, isn't it our server? So anyway, thank you. I just.
But just, just.
Clarify that for my.
Yeah, a little more, a little more, a little more clarification, Jan. The reason that is, is you have a VPN connection.
Yes.
That is connecting to a home. When those.
Right.
Computers are in the building, they are being supported not only by the Wi-Fi, but the Comcast and that type of thing. This is.
Right.
Right. A remote. So that's why it's not going to have that strength.
Yeah, no, I, I have, I have come to understand that recently. Thank you.
That's a good point, but I just wanted to just get one, you know, clarify, do, does Larisha, does Brian, does Jean have, have a computer from the township at their, where they're currently performing their duties?
No. No, no, there are those, those are residing in their offices. That's sitting in their office.
Are they laptops?
No, these are our actual computers. They, no, they're, they're, they're the computers that are in the offices are actual computers. That's what Jan was referring to, that she and Len have.
And Len, Len is willing to help anybody who needs physical help getting their computers home as well, so.
Okay, because we do.
It's just, it's a small box is what it is, actually.
Yeah, we have a responsibility as a lawyer to make sure that they have, you know, the, the necessary equipment to do their jobs. So, you know, I would, I'm glad that Len is, is happy to help. I'll help too. But I'm probably very weak and whatever.
But I'll. The computer itself is very strong, small, rather, sorry, not, not strong. But the, the printer, a printer, for instance, might be somewhat heavy or even some of the monitors, the larger monitors are heavier. And plus which all the connections, he actually, he makes, he makes, puts little Post-its on so, so that the connection can go into, you know, to the right place, taking no chances, because neither one of us are electronic wizards, God knows. So anyway, I said, I asked him whether he'd be able to help if that were, if that were something that would help. Well, basically, Jean and Larisha, because they're not, and Brian presumably can carry his own equipment. And he said, sure, he would, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else on the situation with the building? If not, we're going to move on to continuing business. Is there any continuing business? I had a piece.
Point of order, I think we skipped 2021, 2022 outreach.
I apologize. I do apologize. 2021, 2022 outreach communication strategy. I assume that's Jack's baby?
Yes, and in the interest of time, I believe in your board packets, you should have gotten a client report that I had written. It summarizes in about a page and a half, a couple of conversations that Supervisor-Elect Eisenberg and I had with some initiatives and plans from May through the end of February 22. Now with the fire, you know, a couple of things may be up in the air, depending on when we open, reopen, et cetera. But we're going to stage a couple of new service events like paper shreds, one in June and one probably in September, October. We're still working through the details. The good news, we got St. Joseph's Church in Willmett, who graciously allowed us to use their parking lot on Saturday, June 26th. So all the wheels are in motion on our first paper shred event. Things like flu shots in the fall, those are coming up. And Gail is working with the North Shore Legal Aid Clinic to stage a few pop-up legal education events that are part of our educational forum series. So I've been working with the legal clinic on the logistics. One would be power of attorney for students going back to school, power of attorney forms and a notary service. And then in the fall, we're working with Amy from the North Shore Senior Center Power of Attorney for Senior Citizens. So those are two very exciting new service events. And without going through it in a lot of detail, we've got several initiatives. One, including the website, again, which is coming, the contract comes in September. Decision needs to be made on the provider. We also have discussed online giving in the last couple of meetings. More robust platform, more choices. We've also had discussion preliminarily about database where we can have all the data points for the township, hopefully in one accessible database. So we no longer have to create à la carte lists and things. We'd all be able to share the same database. We discussed pantry automation, expanding forms, more automation, reduction of paper. And we also, hopefully at some point, will be able to modernize the boardroom. We've discussed in the past, having a big TV and projection and what have you. So all of that is in this executive summary that you should have. And then I submitted to Gail a couple of proposals back in 2016. Patty put me on a 10 to 12-hour a week consulting arrangement. And what I am proposing to Supervisor-Elect Eisenberg and the board is for me to work on a project basis, things like the courier, the dispatch, et cetera. You should all have my proposals in your board packet. And of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but given the late hour, I don't want to belabor my report.
Thank you, Jack. And Jack, the only problem with your current report is we don't even have computers functioning. So it's going to be difficult to say the least, implement some of your ideas, but we'll get there.
Okay, well, the US Mail, we can still use that. It's still.
I do it every day. Thank you, Jack. I appreciate it. All right. Now I would like to entertain any continuing business.
I've got a quick question for him. On your paper shredding program or have you checked with, I'm not sure about Willmett, but certainly Winnetka. Both of those villages have paper shredder events.
Yes, and one of the next coming things is coordination with the village. I just literally secured the church site a couple of days ago. So yes, that, you're right, John, that is on my to-do list.
Why would we want to have a paper shredder event when our villages are doing it already?
Correct, yes. Yes, you're right. That will be. Correct. Yes. Yes, you're right. That will be coordinated. Yes. Yes, sir.
If you recall from last month, we had a constituent come speak who brought up, or two months ago brought up that Winnetka's program had been canceled. And I haven't seen anything.
Both of those villages have paper shredder events.
Well, Kate McNally actually is
Things is coordination with the village. I just
Winnetka's program had been canceled.
Okay, we're getting some kind of weird feedback. I don't know where that came from.
Sorry, that was probably me because I went to, there was a comment on the Facebook Live from Kate Castle McNally, who was saying that Winnetka had to move theirs all the way to August. So that's a good point as far as not having a second one in the, in that vicinity.
Yes, agree.
Last question for you. You've got flu vaccine purchase in your list. What's that?
So if the township goes forward with a flu shot event, the township would be buying the actual vials through Walgreens or whoever the provider is and paying for the actual vials of the flu vaccine. So that would be another service to pantry clients or folks that don't have assets or resources to get the shot. It would be a new service.
Right. And we had, we had, had started discussions with that this year, but sadly, we're not able to get it done. So that therefore was put off for another year. So we could start earlier. Report.
And so we're trying to get out, fly ahead of the plane a little bit and do some planning for summer and fall events. So we're coordinated and we've got everything in order as best we can, given the pandemic. Not exactly sure how everything will be by fall, but I think we'll be in much better shape. So I'm starting to optimistically plan for more live events and more engagement, you know, where we can get Mary Beth Stein back in to do the Medicare Part D and, and kind of get back to some of the programs we've been able to offer in the past. So.
Thank you, Jack.
Alan, on continuing business, the Agency Oversight Committee is looking for us to adopt a guideline going forward, if we don't already have one, to avoid potential future conflicts of interest with regard to our Yes, Stephen?
That's on, under new business, which would be next. Entertaining it out, but
The only reason I brought it. Okay, I can wait for new business. I
It was listed on the agenda as an item of new business, Elliot. That's why I'm
I'll hold up.
That being said, anything with continuing business, I have a couple of points myself. One of them is, I was curious as to the feedback we received with regard to our vaccination program that we had for COVID vaccine. I hadn't heard anything after the fact. I didn't know if it was considered successful or not, whether people got shots, whether we got, people got put into a line never getting shots. So I was just curious about any feedback anybody had on that issue.
So feedback wise, we were given fifty, how it ended up being, working is we were given fifty slots ahead of schedule when it was, when they opened the slots to the general public. And sadly, I don't think we filled any of those spots.
When was that? When was that offering? Gail, was that after the initial?
It was, it was day before the, the, the phone lines went live to the municipalities. And we did not take advantage of that. And it was disappointing.
Okay. I hadn't heard one way or the other. And did you hear from any of the township constituents with regard to whether they were able to get the shot they wanted? Or whether or not they had got stuck on phone lines, et cetera?
I've actually heard pretty good, everything, everything that I've heard has been good as far as that goes. And actually, just on a, you know, very unscientific survey during the the housewares collection, which was incredibly successful. We, we, as people were coming in and we were getting their information for their donation receipt, I was asking them if they needed to help obtaining a vaccine as well. Because we had other opportunities with these municipality programs and only had two people who needed help obtaining a vaccine out of, gosh, Jack, how many people came by?
It was over two hundred twenty people visited during that, that period of time.
Right. I individually did contact both of those two people who did mention that they needed help with vaccines when there was some extra vaccine available at the second nutrition clinic.
Thank you. Appreciate it. My other continuing business issue was I had suggested at the last meeting that perhaps we give Alan more than just an award, which we gave him at the annual town meeting. I would reiterate my request and entertain anybody else's thoughts on the matter. I know our building's not functioning at the moment, but it will be. And when it is, I think it would be appropriate to name a part of the building or room in the building, for that matter, the whole building, if you will, for in Alan's honor. So that's my take.
I thought we had discussed the possibility of do, using the, doing the big conference room, the boardroom.
Right. That was, that was one suggestion. Correct.
I, I still think that's a great idea.
Can I, anybody want to entertain a motion? John, you were gonna say
I got a question. Alan has been our supervisor for four years and before that he was trustee for eight years, maybe?
Eight years, but he was also on those committees forever. So his time
Did we name anything? What, what was the name of the lady that was his predecessor?
Patty Brennan.
Yeah, Patty Brennan, wasn't she?
In her mom's honor.
But wasn't she supervisor and
She was And she was a trustee for four years before that. And she too had served on many, many things. But one of the nice things, John, establishing that award forever, Harriet and Patty is the first recipient of that, you know, will be memorialized. And the only other thing that to my knowledge that we've named, well, the Georgie Noise Award, which Alan always, you know, cherishes because he was it's the, the food pantry was named in honor of Betty Vitale. So it's kind of nice. And we have a plaque in the back there. So room would be a better fit than the whole building. And especially since think about how many seat and butt, butt and seat time that Alan spent in that war. Well, Stephen, what are we going to name for you? You, you've been
We'll get there, we'll get there eventually. I have ideas. John, to your point, I thought about that as well. We have had some three great supervisors preceding Alan. I think that our, our hearts are wrenched by Alan's current circumstances. And that's why the push. But you're absolutely right. We've only named one other part of the building after someone. And unfortunately, that was after they had deceased. And so it would be somewhat of a precedent making a policy, but I think it would be appropriate.
I love Alan. I'm sure we all do. But I think a room would be sufficient as opposed to the building, like the conference room or something.
John, I was just being global in my comments. Do I have a motion from anybody? Do we need a motion?
I think you should have a motion.
What'd you say, Jerome? I couldn't hear you.
I think you should have a motion and vote on it. So it's clear for the public record that
I move to name the major conference room on the second floor of the township in honor of Alan Goldberg, our soon to be passed supervisor.
Second.
Any discussion? Jerome?
Trustee Mojer.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
That was a muted yes.
Yes.
Trustee Eisenberg.
Yes.
And Trustee Robbins.
Yes, with the stipulation that the wording be correct for a living. You know, this is, this is a living person and we want to use the correct terminology.
Understood. Okay, the
Stephen, would you like me to talk to Brian or would you like to, Brian has a knack for plaques. I mean, he did the Betty one in the back. You should
I would talk to him.
Would you talk to him and just like something, it would be really nice that if at the inauguration of the new board, if we could give that to him, what a cool send-off that would be.
You want me to, you want me to talk to him?
Oh, I think it would be super nice if we could
That's fine. I just clarifying who's talking to I will call Brian tomorrow.
Alan, Sandy and I will want to say just a thank you or so. But then once we inaugurate Nicole, it's done, you know, you don't want to re, it's, it's the focus on.
I will call Brian tomorrow. Jerome, my only issue is, if I don't get ahold of him tomorrow, I'm going to be out of town for about ten days. So there could be a gap in time there.
Okay, but he, he's like a whiz on, on all that stuff. So.
I will follow up tomorrow.
Get a really nice one. And just how cool that will be. Instead it is the boardroom, the boardroom be the Goldberg room. I did have an item for new business, Mr. Trustee.
We're just moving, we're just moving to new business now. And I believe that we were going to raise the issue of the conflict of interest that Elliot raised first.
Okay, okay.
Briefly, I attended the agency oversight meeting in your your stead, Stephen, you were out of town. I was happy to attend and that entire committee is looking for us to adopt a guideline or rule to avoid a potential conflict of interest in the future. They make it a point to say that they are not allowed to serve on any kind of agency in a board capacity or in an officer capacity if they want to serve on one of our oversight committees. And they can't understand how we are operating, allowing trustees to potentially serve as board members or officers of agencies when in fact, there's at least the appearance, if not an actual conflict of interest that could be perceived by other agencies. Even when there is a recusal, you know, that this particular individual has ties to one of the agencies. The way they framed it, it's, you know, a bunch of agencies kind of feel like they're competing for a, a pot, a common pot. And they just, it doesn't sit well with them. So they're looking for us to adopt something going forward, which is, you know, codified, if we will, in terms of trying to avoid this from coming up again in the future.
Elliot, have you, have you come up with anything as far as written language as to what might be appropriate?
Well, I, I haven't because I think it's, they want to go a little farther than, you know, than seems. I don't know how, I think they want, they're, they're suggesting that no trustee should have a, should serve as a on the board or in an officer's capacity of any agency that gets funds from the township. And I thought that was a little broad and sweeping and I thought that might be something run by Toya or maybe get a legal opinion on it from our council before we go with something like that. But that's how far they're prepared, you know, that's, that's what they're thinking might need to be appropriate. And I don't know how, how you folks feel about that.
So as I mentioned, I think a couple of months past, you know, I was interested in trying to have some sort of, you know, rethinking of our agency oversight committees over the summer with Brian so that people are consistent, have some sort of guidelines for their deliberations. And I think that adding in consideration of this kind of policy would make sense into a more holistic look at our committee process.
Gail, do you think it's appropriate to set up a subcommittee for that purpose? Or have a committee of the whole meeting?
I would hope that a, a trustee not assigned to one of the current sitting committees might be interested in that.
Well, we're also, we had agreed that we would hold our committees until after the election were completed and then reassign people to committees. So at that juncture, that might be the time to entertain that idea.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think that it's not necessarily put on the agenda, or would you like it on the agenda for the next meeting?
I, I think I'd like to see it continue on the agenda until we get a resolution.
That's fine, Elliot. That's why I was asking. So we will continue that issue as now continuing business as opposed to new business. That being said, Jerome, you had some thoughts for new business?
Continuing or new, but did the board approve payment to the Northfield Township Food Pantry at the last meeting or is that something coming up? Because, you know, as good neighbors as they are, I'm sure that they would expect some financial confrontation is, as well as other things. And I'm just curious if the board's considering that. I don't have of any control.
We didn't
I don't have any recollection.
Yeah, the fire occurred after our last board meeting. I did get numbers from Brian that they've served seventy of our clients since, as of Monday morning. So yes, I do agree that some sort of, you know, transfer is in order. But I, you know, feel like we should wait until we're done, see our total numbers and then make a determination.
Why don't we also let Brian ask them to, oh, if you will, send us an estimate or a bill? And then we can say, oh, yes or no, and probably would say yes.
And this is something like in the future, Jack, I'm sure you could write a really cool story about that, how, you know, one township can help another in that they open up their
Absolutely. Yep. And, and these, in my opinion, would be incidental expenses that we should attempt to pass on to our liability insurer because these expenses arise directly out of the interruption in business that we're suffering.
Thank you. I just wanted to raise it.
All right, that, that being said, Jerome, will you talk to Brian about it in terms of contacting Northfield and ask him what they want or need from us?
We, you guys probably saw that Brian and Jean were with me here at, Sandy would have been here, but she couldn't make it over that night. She was online. But it was really comforting to get both of them just for your information. And if you saw there was need to like just to have them here. Their knowledge is so good.
So you'll talk to Brian about the Northfield Township situation? Thank you.
He was just happy with Northfield. So
Thanks, thanks, Jerome. We're moving on to approval of claims unless there's other new business. Okay, John, this is your area. You're muted, John.
John, I'm sorry. That's okay. I don't have the numbers to put that together. So you'll have to hold off on that until next month and we can do a double month then.
Okay, I think there's a couple of months as it is. All right, that, we will then at the next board meeting in May, address the approval of claims, which was not completed this evening. So that would be an additional agenda item. Okay. A date for the board meeting in May. I heard a couple of dates thrown out.
It's the eleventh and then the third Tuesday, the eighteen. So May eleven or eighteen. And then remember on May, it just the twenty-fourth will be the turnover.
All right. Anybody have a preference as between May eleventh and May eighteenth? Let's make it May eighteenth then, if that's okay with everyone. And watch, I'll be the one with the conflict. I have my calendar with me, but we'll set May eighteenth for the next board meeting. Okay.
As long as we're agenda item or, or meeting, is everyone good on the twenty-fourth on a Monday evening? On a Monday evening?
It's not Monday Night Football yet. I'm fine.
Monday evening?
I don't believe I'm going to be here on the twenty-fourth. I'm sorry.
You're an integral part.
Jack, you're
Is there another date, Jerome? Is there?
That's the day you guys take over is right at, so it's
Kind of set in stone?
Getting that date, Jerome, because I was seeing the seventeenth.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Oh, man. The seventeenth, well, then we couldn't have the new, but next boardroom because that would be it. You'd be
We'd be behind ourselves.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. At least according to perspect, the township perspective, which I, you know, I tend to
All right, if I, I don't know where, so if it's not the twenty-fourth, then we better have the meeting the eleventh because
Right.
screw up and
Jerome, didn't, did you get a form for that inauguration yet? You haven't.
No, I, geez. And Gail, thank you for correcting me on this one. If it's in, I have the perspective right here. I know the villages are even earlier, like the eleventh the twelfth, because they're doing their inauguration. Yeah, was it in that calendar section?
Yes. I mean, I'm looking at the February issue, so. Yes. I mean, I'm looking at the February issue. So I my page numbers would be off.
Chip and Road District. Okay. It's. Oh, boy, Gail, thank you so much for catching this. Honestly, my mind, I was so excited about it. It is on the 17th. New term of office begins for supervisor clerk, highway commissioner and trustees. Okay, fabulous. Thanks for the catch, Mr. Mr. Trustee Moser. Can we switch it then for the 11th? So.
That's fine. So we'll do May 17 as inauguration and May 11 as a board meeting.
What time would that inauguration be on the 17th?
I mean, would it be okay with you if we had like some a light dinner kind of thing and then have a meeting with that?
Okay, so now that I've told you that it's the 17th officially, I'm going to be the annoying person that points out that it's one of the, you know, three major holidays of Judaism.
Oh, whoops.
Say that again, Gail. I didn't catch you.
It's shavuot, the lesser known of the three of the Shalosh Regalim.
Other or do it in homes or? Can we celebrate it happy for your new term? Or is it something that you do at home or something like that?
Right, it's it's considered one of the ones you don't work on.
Okay.
Yeah, I can I can discuss with my rabbi slash mother and we will discuss.
Well, Gail, you want to? Do you want to address it now or do you want to address it later?
I feel like, I mean, if we could, can we do? Can we just do it observed on the 18th after dark?
When are we saying the board meeting is? The 11th?
11th.
The 11th.
Okay, Jack, I need to talk with you too to get that posting done then.
Yeah.
Yep, I usually take care of it.
Right, but I'll send you the what we're talking for the public hearing because the dates are getting really closer here now.
Jerome, can you? Can you see if there's a form available for the 18th?
Sure.
For the inauguration?
Sure. I mean, as long it would be the kind of thing as yes, you'd be you'd already be the new board, but then. You know, it would be more of a reality. Okay.
Perfect.
So the 18th then would be our inauguration. We could do I could find a spot, maybe the village hall, maybe, you know, something that we just mentioned. So and Elliot, how good do you have like a little light dinner then? And just make it a nice event, bring your families. We've done that in the past and it's really been.
Jerome, I have some reservations about that during COVID, to be honest.
Okay.
I just don't know that it's appropriate that we eat together. I. What?
How about cookies and?
All right, we could have cookies. I think that's.
Can I snack?
You can. You can arrange for something to be brought in.
I just feel weird having a gathering with no refreshment. So how about that? I'll just switch it over to refreshment, maybe a little fruit tray and some.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you remember the old days when I used to get those stuff?
Yeah, I love those cookies.
He's upstairs. Hopefully, he's baking those for my mom.
Okay. All right. So the board meeting is May 11.
No, no, sorry. Thirty, we we can't do the 11th for the board meeting because of the the requirement of 30 days posting. So we would have had to have done that last week.
But just the fact that it was posted earlier, Gail, does that make it okay? Because we did have it posted for now and that.
You're saying that it's currently posted.
Doesn't work. Jerome, doesn't work. But I don't think it works.
It was in the.
Right, but like the date, it needs to be the day of the public meeting. How can the public participate? You know, they need to be able to access the meeting. That wasn't provided.
Could we have the board meeting on the 18th and then have the inauguration after the board meeting?
Yeah, that would be kind of sweet.
Let's do that.
Okay, so everything will be on the 18th.
Everything on the 18th.
But would you, Stephen, would you consider doing it? Then would you like to go all virtual then or for me to try to get the village hall? No.
Given that, Jerome, it may be better to do it virtual, although I'd like to do the village hall. That's a dilemma.
Why don't you check up on the village hall because they probably already have ability to stream.
We used to have peer jury. You remember that, Elliot?
How how will we coordinate that, the technology? If we do this now, how how will that work?
That's what we're discussing, Jack. It may be better to go virtual with all of it is what I'm hearing.
Correct. Yes. So if we're talking about virtual from a village hall, then I have to figure out how to rig this up from the village hall to broadcast it from there. Is that what I'm hearing?
Not if that's not.
Do we have to have the public? And if we do, then we probably have to do all virtual. And it would be easier to do all virtual rather than involving the village hall.
I think I would agree with that. Jerome, I think that we're going to be virtual for the board meeting as well as the inauguration.
I was just hoping to see you again and do the. All right, Nicole, we're gonna have to have a virtual fist bump then. So so is the 18th then? So you'll understand the new board will be no, but the conflict of that is then how can you seat an old board when when really by the rules? It's so is this it for the old board?
That's a good point.
It's a pleasure working with you. I'll see you on the 18th.
Yeah, what's?
Why don't we have the inauguration before the meeting?
Won't I be the clerk on May 18th? Because I'm clerk as of May 17th.
Yeah.
I can't swear myself in on the 18th.
Okay, guys. So.
Is that good? The promise.
It has come to my attention that the 18th doesn't work anyway, because we would have had to have posted it on the on April 18. So my proposal would be for us to have the inauguration on the 18th as planned and have the new board preside over the public hearing the following week.
Okay. So that, Gail, that might be a very short thing. I'll just say a few words. Alan will say a few words. We could say, you know, we've named the boardroom in Alan's honor. And then Sandy would say a few words. And then I would ask Nicole to and then Nicole would swear in the rest of the board. And then we would just meet. You guys would meet the next week.
Right.
Okay, so we're going with the 18th for the inauguration. And then, Gail, what's that following week? What would that?
May 25th.
May 24th?
Or five.
Yeah.
What is it?
The 25th.
25th?
If it's Tuesday. Yes.
Okay.
And I would certainly, since I will be supervisor by that point, we will likely make that a just about the budget. So.
Board meeting, May 25th, inauguration, May 18th.
And then just to note that then will have to be approved at that meeting on the 25th and then submitted.
Immediately.
By the new correct.
Oh. Nicole, I can meet you downtown. It's really kind of fun. I like filing first and just you get the stamp and you know that we're.
I'll be fully vaccinated by then. So happy to.
We could have a lunch time.
Self is actually off of the date that you have passed the budget. So you have 30 days from then. So that will determine it. It won't be. You don't have to do that by May 30.
We just.
Anybody want a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Well, I think that was the second and the so moved. Jerome, roll call.
Trustee Moser.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Eisenberg.
Yes.
And trustee Robbins.
Yes.
Oh, it's my last roll call. Good luck.
Everybody be well. Thank you.
I'll reach out tomorrow with you to give you the posting to include in yours.
Thank you, Alan.